Good evening, Council. Good evening all of our public. iPhone says 7:00 PM. Everybody quiets down beautifully. Thank you so much. Gee. Thank you for being here tonight on a beautiful February, Indiana evening. And what else would you be doing besides attending a city council meeting? It's great. So we'll begin as we normally do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Terry Lee here to do our prayer? He's supposed to be here tonight. He'll probably come in. Well, if he doesn't show up, you got me. So we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have an invocation before we open the meeting and we'll get down to business. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can you join me, please? Dear Lord, we thank you for the privilege to be able to meet. And this means that you have given us our forefathers of the United States from long, long ago. Please bless the city of Westfield, our councilors, our citizens as we undertake some very serious business tonight, looking at some of our next chapters, going through some growth proposals. But it's all done in the means of growing this city so that it may be a destination for all to enjoy. Amen?
Amen.
President Dr. Mark Keen. It's your meeting, sir.
Thank you. I have the clerk call the roll to note the presence of a quorum.
Here.
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 Thank you very much. There are no changes to the agenda, but before we go on, I just wanted to let everyone know, there's a little camera up there. We're going to start recording these meetings. They'll be posted hopefully by tomorrow morning on our website and so the community can view the meeting. And we think that's important for transparency and also to get information out to the public. I'm sure it will be overwhelmed tomorrow and may even crash because so many people are going to want to see this. You know, most of you know I used to be the school superintendent. We always called our school board meetings, we spelled it B-O-R-E-D. And sometimes city council meetings have exactly the same spelling, so we'll move forward. Sometimes boring is good, but I would like to make a couple other comments. It's the first time I've been president and I know I'm actually being president. So a couple of things, and this is not to say these things have happened in the past, but they were very important things to me. One, there's a Westfield way, I feel, and that is when we talk and when we address issues, we talk about issues, we don't talk about personalities. We respect each other, we have an interchange of ideas, and we move forward after we've fully flushed out ideas, but we leave personalities aside because that's not the important thing. The ideas are the important thing in the community. And secondly, there are a lot of issues come before the council. There are financial issues. And I do read some blogs, I do read Nextdoor with regularity, and there's really a lot of misinformation about public finance. We're a tax cap state. The DLGF downtown controls our budget more than a lot of people would ever believe. If we don't spend money, it won't reduce taxes. If we do spend money, it won't raise taxes in 99.9% of the time. So what we do is we discuss how best to invest the money we have to grow the community of Westfield and to make it a better place to live. Now correspondingly, when you make a place a better place to live, more people want to come, property values go up, and trending does occur, and tax bills could rise as a result of that. But it's not because of the direct action of the council. If you do A, then taxes will go up. So I may say that a few more times throughout the year, but I think it's important to know our job is to invest money wisely and it will not affect taxes, whatever we do. So with that, we need to move on to the approval of the minutes. Had a chance to review the minutes. Cindy, I think you had a couple of changes that you caught?
I did. Those got to the clerk treasure.
The clerk had been changed. Okay, then could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some moved.
Second. Moved by Cindy Spoljerick, second by Joe Edwards. Any discussion? Will not do roll call on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 No opposition, move on to the claims. You've had a chance to review the document for the claims. Do I have a motion to approve claims?
Some moved.
Jamaica has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joe Edwards. Any discussion or clarification needed on claims? Not voiced vote on claims, all in favor, please say aye.
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 No opposition to that. They've passed by 5-0. On to business, special recognitions. We have Dinah Ferschman, Executive Director of Trinity Free Clinic here. You want to come forward and present to us? I have passed the, the council has the information. I don't know if you want to have any other for...
I am delighted that so many people came tonight just to hear about the Trinity Free Clinic. This is great. Okay, and I want to be respectful of your time, so I'm going to set my timer here. I'm going to do this very fast, so strap on your seatbelts. There's a lot of information that I would like to give you tonight. As many of you already know, the Trinity Free Clinic is the medical and dental safety net for our county, and we serve, we provide free medical and dental care to our working poor. And since I can't pick you up and take you out with me to the clinic so you can see it, I'm going to give you a quick virtual tour of our clinic, okay? So that's our waiting room, and it's packed, packed during our walk-in clinics on Saturday, although we're open six days a week. This is the boss's office. This is one of our medical exam rooms. We have six exam rooms, and we have six dental operatories, and we have our pharmacy. So there you go, a quick tour of our clinic. Now, you know how we have the State of the Union, and I'd like to give you the state of the health insurance of our state, but that will take a very long time. But the bottom line is that the folks that work in our community at those low-income jobs cannot afford health insurance. Small employers cannot provide it, and big employers have to provide it, but it's unaffordable. And folks can't, they can't use it. For example, we take care of a lot of school janitors because they cannot afford the insurance that is offered to them. We take care of the employees from big companies like Walmart, for example. They have health insurance, but they can't afford it. Our population, our patient population are the laborers. We have, huge chunk of our patients are the people that work in the food industry, the people that serve you, the waitresses, the cooks, the people that do the landscaping, the hospitality, the retail. Those are the kind of people that we serve, basically the people that hold it all together in our community. Just a quick snapshot of what we were able to provide last year in terms of services. And here's just another view. So as you can see, dental and immediate acute medical are huge needs in our county. So those are the people that, I can't go to work today because I have a throbbing toothache. That's the kind of people that we help. Okay, so here are the numbers that, by cities, as you can see, Westfield is third. So of all of our cities, a third most popular, so about 20%. And so Trinity, it costs Trinity $133,000 to provide care to Westfield residents, but the value that we were able to provide was $283,000 worth of free medical and dental care because we have free labor, right? We have volunteers do all the work, and then the church, Lady of Montgomery, provides us with the building. And because we're very good at begging and we pinch pennies, that's why we can provide so much for so little. There's a couple of, there's one big initiative that I wanted to share with you is the employer project. We realized that most of the people that we are helping are the working poor. So we decided, rather than wait for people to get sick and learn about us and come, we wanted to be proactive and go out to employers and partner with them. To take a proactive approach, we would much rather take care of a patient with a cavity than someone who is now has a broken tooth that has to be extracted. We'd much rather see a truck driver that has hypertension than one who has just been released from the hospital after a heart attack. So we want to connect with these employers so that we can explain to the employees, this is the services that we can provide to you, we can be proactive about their health, and then we can also have job fairs at the clinic as well. And then with this increased number of people that are working, of working poor coming to the clinic, we need to increase capacity. So we're having the IU School of Dentistry coming two and a half times more than what they used to come. Marion University with their medical students and faculty are coming also. They're doubling the amount of services that they're providing to us. And now Purdue is providing us with interns for our pharmacy. And now we are able to provide immunizations for adults. That means all of those folks that are out there working in the landscaping, construction, and they need all these shots, well, now we can provide shots for adults as well. And we have a couple of other institutions that are interested in working with us, like the IU School of Medicine. One big thing that has happened this year is we were receiving calls from your school nurses because the Lions Club used to provide glasses vouchers for children that needed help to get eyeglasses, but now the Lions Club can't afford to do that anymore. So we started getting calls from school nurses saying, what do I do with this, have this student, and he needs glasses, and the parents can't afford them. So we said, well, I guess we're doing kids' eyeglasses now. So that's, we started that this year. So you're wondering, how do we fund all this? And our budget is basically divided in two. Half of it is in-kind budget. As you can see, hospital provide us with labs, for example, Riverview does, is a big help. The Department of Health provides us with our free immunizations. But our biggest chunk is the free labor that we get from our volunteers. And then this is the cash, right? Because we also need cash to run. And as you can see, 41% of our finances come from individuals, 25% come from the government, like Westfield has also supported us in the past. One way that you can help us is by attending one of our luncheon learns, like Mr. Aitken attended. And it's a strictly one-hour event where you come and you get a tour of the clinic, you eat lunch while you hear about what we do, and that's it. It is just an information event. So we do it every month at the last Thursday of the month. We would like to have you, and we would like to ask you to invite other community leaders just to come see what is it that we can provide. Finally, you have received also a spreadsheet that shows all of the Westfield employers that we have helped so far, whose employees we've taken care of. If you know, if you have any contacts that you can make for us, please connect us. And if there's any other companies that are not on that list, that should be on that list, please let us know, make that connection for us. And finally, we will have our great gala event, and of course, we will send you all free registration because we'd love to have our city councils present. And I did pretty good times, so thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Just for the sake of the fact that we are recording this, and I don't think the PowerPoint can be seen properly on our recording, would you just state your location again so anybody who may know of someone who might need services or wants to come and look at it?
Sure. So the Trinity Free Clinic is located in basically the intersection of 146th and Oak Ridge Road. Technically, our sign is in Westfield, so we claim dual citizenship with Westfield and Carmel. So we are located on the grounds of our Lady of Montgomery Church in a big brick building called the Matthew 25 Center.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just, just as a note, I was informed earlier today that the, I believe the video does catch the screen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have another, actually a couple of presentations, an overview and some financial data. Andy, you want to introduce this?
Yes. I live. You know, I know most people who work here.
I know. I know. Now I gotta go feed my kids.
You don't want to... Have them all gone. Don't feel bad. Two seats. Yeah, two seats. Okay. Hey, thank you for being here. Tonight really begins the last piece, if you will, of a very long-term project. And all of you know, that is the Grand Junction in our downtown area. Let me back up and give a little history. Some of you maybe knew, some of you have been here longer than I have, but this whole endeavor really began, though, well over 10 years ago with the Comprehensive Land use Plan, I think it was 2008. And one chapter in that said, "We want and desire a vibrant gathering place for our downtown." The first step after that was to decide back in 2008, where is our downtown? A lot of activity and building services had moved west, and it was, there was a question. And the consensus of the public came back to the downtown, that we want our downtown to be built around the Union and 32 home lanes for the area. So from there, we began to look at what we could do. We formed the Grand Junction Pass group, a group that has varied in membership, aged from 10 to 20, depends on what's going on, for a period of time that I think every month. Spent hours looking with mainly members of the public, along with a sprinkling of our government people, to come up with a long-term plan for our downtown, specifically the piece we keep, we need to gather a place in our downtown. And really, we need to do that for several reasons. One, my job, which has changed greatly over the timeline down here when all we did really was pick up trash and fill pot holes, our job today is to create a place, create a unique and special place in which people and families want to live. We all would love to have our children and our grandchildren, because that truly is what has made Westfield its past and its future. In order to do that, tonight's a perfect example. Who wants to live in this peril, in this kind of beautiful landscape, in this black boring town? We have to work a little harder than that. That's another reason for why we need to do something very, very... The other part is our history. We've got very deep faith-based history here. We want to keep that, we want to honor that. We also want to recognize that we're making history today, and that is a very important part as we look forward. And in addition to that, you know, over the last couple of years, we've asked people, how did you want your city to be? That answer was, we all want to be as business casual and efficient, we want to keep that smallness. Okay. Last year, we asked the question, what do we do today to ensure that our city is vibrant and sustainable in 30 years as it is today? We don't want to be submerged in lashing paint. So there again, doing things within our means to construct things, if you will, like a grand park, like a grand juncture, that we can add a sense of community behind it. Only if we put those two together will we truly be successful. So as we wandered down the path of looking at how to do this gathering place plaza, I think we went through gosh, three or four different design things, because we knew we wanted to do something with, we have one asset, it's natural, and it's the creeks and the greenway that pass through our middle of our town. You think about other cities around us, even Hampton Beach, don't have, how can we build on that? We build a network of trails that gather in our downtown area. So we've been interviewing a lot of different groups, having them come in and give different proposals. And finally came across somebody that said, you know what, we can take that old 1850s Indiana ditch, it used to be called Stink Creek, all right? You guys have been there longer than I have. It used to be called Stink Creek. How can we turn that back into the way it was made 3000 years ago? And then one of the interviews, we introduced the gentleman by the name of David Ruben, somebody from the Land Collective, and we were very fortunate to be introduced to him. My Ken Alexander, I think I saw Ken walk in, that is Ken. He'll come to us. Ken previously worked as a contractor, he's met David at Eskenazi Hospital, and David is by trade one of the really most renowned landscape architecture firms in the United States. But always, he's not an industry class, but less talks. And David visited here, and I can be quite a peddly historian, but he became quite involved with the Little City. He spent the next couple of years working with our Grand Junction Pass group, with the citizens. We've gone through a lot of public sessions, a lot of stops and starts, and what is this? And what should this be? But we've asked David to come back. David is from Philadelphia, but he just recently opened an office in Indiana, and very proud of downtown Indianapolis, very proud of that. And David brings to the table literally a cast of different people from, gosh, lighting, specialists, architects, engineers, acoustic people, truly international in so many. And we brought David back to kind of reintroduce us all to the energy that we feel at Grand Park will build and contribute here to the legacy of the Little City. With your work, I'm very grateful.
With this is permission, can I fix this way without disrespecting you?
Certainly.
I just love that there's an audience here, so... Hello, everybody. I'm Dave Ruben, Principal of Land Collective. I want to just acknowledge a couple of things. First, it's the anniversary of the studio tonight, and I'm honored to be sharing it with you for six years old tonight. And I can't think of a better place to spend the time with you, truly, because this has been an adventure that's been going on for a number of years, and...
I'm not sure how you mean that.
In the best possible way.
All right, all right.
Because we did actually open up a studio just this past November in Indianapolis to serve all of you and the rest of the Midwest. It has been, I will say, Your Honor, if I can, that when I came in for the interview, and the time Ken Alexander was in the room, and Melody Jones was in the room, and I remember being brought in, and with all due respect, sir...
Go ahead, give it away.
He said, why the heck are we interviewing another landscape architect? And this guy isn't even from Indiana. And Ken was very calmly said, just let him speak. And he did, Mayor did let me speak. And one thing that was really unique, I think about our approach to thinking about design problem solving here, was that we were the only folks that interviewed that talked about how human beings would engage in a place, that Westfield was an extraordinary city among so many because it was so welcoming of all. And that's part of the history, it's Quaker heritage, is this notion that one gives of oneself, one puts out one's hand and says welcome to all. And that's an extraordinary thing, and it's very different than so many other cities. I have to keep pressing that to you because that's what's kept me here. I have been so welcomed that I kept flourishing in the area because of that genuine hospitality. And that is a very unique quality. And so with that said, I wanted to just engage in a little valid, so it's the Apple Bose, okay? I want you to breathe, right? Like just breathe me zen about it, just let it flow over you. We believe in gravity, right? It's this universal truth. It's this thing that binds us to this earth, to the connected tissue that is landscape and that we all stand upon. Every citizen stands upon landscape. It is the most equitable environment in which we can all be because it has an opportunity to allow us to converse. So our goal is actually to design a place where very different sorts of people might find themselves in a well-designed space, a humanist space, a Quakerly space, that says, please sit down, enter into a conversation. And as a result of that conversation with somebody you don't know, say a country professor and a young protester who don't know each other, enter into a dialogue. As a result of that dialogue, they come up with an idea, that idea 10 years down the road saves the world. We will have been successful, and I'm inspirational that it happens here in Westfield, right? This should be the place that saves the world. And I think it can because there's so much opportunity, truthfully. Our firm focuses on an empathetic approach. We really think beyond ourselves to problem solve on behalf of our clients and their constituents, all of you. It's about you, not about me. I just provide the design conduit that says, this is what this place can be. And it's been an extraordinary adventure. So landscape, or landscape, whether it's the archaic English or the archaic Dutch, is this thing that is about the single point of perspective of the broad horizon view, which is the root word of landscape. Landscape is about the broad horizon view, and as a result, it includes everything, all the living systems, all the static systems, sociology, anthropology, design, all the things that make us human beings are contained within landscape. And that's the opportunity to be incredibly equitable about that spectrum where everybody gets to participate, whether they're the same as you or whether they're different than you, they, we all participate in landscape. So the team that we put together is actually an extraordinary one that really is about working in collaboration with you, the citizens of Westfield and the city that supports everybody. There's a core design team. Our architect of record is Rachel H.W. Kahn, and the guidance of Matthias Kolwich is the design architect. Tillet Lighting, she is a lighting psychologist, will you remember that? She thinks about the human condition and how environment through light can actually change people's behavior, right, for the better? And keeping in mind that at the time, the world was dark, so illumination is an important part. Bruce Brown Design, our graphic designers and wakefinders. Stan Tech, our fountain designers. We have a whole slew of consultants that support us in the engineering sciences. And then there's Land Collective, which are the design conduits for all of those people in collaboration with the city. It's about that spark, right? It's about the connectivity of these things. It's about that circuit board that brings us all together. So that individual spark, that thing that resonates within us, is this extraordinary movement. But when you can take that individuality and marry it to something quite wonderful that represents all of us, then you have something extraordinary about that now. And the notion is that we can take a place where serenities and encounters and meetings can happen, where people can engage with each other in this great circuit board that's called landscape, in the context of, and you've seen it already taking place, right? You've seen how Park Street is basically speculation. It's a return on investment for something that is actually not yet happened, only the infrastructure has happened. So Park Street and downtown and the great quality and character of Westfield is actually going to be buoyed by Grand Junction Park and Park. This is where we are in the context of the design presently, and I want to take you through that. But in order to do that, I want to talk about what got us here, right? So in the first days of the project, and this actually might have been just after the interview, there's him actually, and there's Melody and other folks. And we're standing on the trail that doesn't exist anymore. And the reason why it didn't exist was because of the Swamp Act that actually the mayor talked about. When I interviewed here, one of the things that I... So in the first days of the project, and this actually might have been just after the interview. There's him, actually, and there's Melody and other folks. And we're standing on the trail that doesn't exist anymore. And the reason why it didn't exist was because of the swamp act that actually the mayor talked about. When I interviewed here, one of the things that I did, walking on interview day with Ken and Melody and representatives from the city, was I said, you know, the park is actually going to be challenged by a creek that is unstable. And I went through the narrative, Indiana adopted the swamp act in eighteen fifty. They channelized every rivulet, the idea of getting water off of the productive plants. The idea was to get water out so that you could have farming and other cultivation take place. Not the most forward-thinking because actually half of Indiana is in the Gulf of Mexico right now because it all eroded away. And part of the challenge is because of this need to remediate the swamp act, which is to say, get rid of the channel, make it a creek again, that will make it stable. So in looking at this, April tenth of that year, something awful happened, which is you had a five hundred year storm event that blew out the forty eight in your place, where we were standing in that previous photograph, which flooded the downtown. And five hundred year flood events are coming every two hundred and fifty years now, or less. Because we actually had a second five hundred year flood event that only happened a year ago. So the notion in the design of this park, actually, you have to solve the infrastructure first, which is what we've been doing. We've actually been figuring out how to stabilize Cool Creek so that it becomes this place that symbolized Westfield long ago before the swamp act. There's actually documentation in the city papers that advertising Westfield as a place where people can engage in their waterways, in their creeks, that it's a beautiful environment. And unfortunately, swamp act took away that opportunity. So what we've been trying to do is figure out how to remediate so that we can get a stable creek condition, which is what has been happening out there these past couple of years. So through a lot, through the task force and through a couple of meetings like this one, we worked with everyone to figure out what would be the best way to approach that, which is how we got to this design. So the things that actually have been happening, you've been watching. Mill Street went in, which is actually a levee. And, whoop, I don't know, can you see that little wall right there? That's actually a weir that holds back the floodwaters during those rain events that actually keeps that blowout from happening again, right? And the reason why, and the notion is to pull apart the channelized rivulet so that it can actually beautifully lay within the landscape and people can get to it in the future. And also, if you haven't gone out there recently, it also supports an incredible amount of wildlife. There are clovers that are now coming here that I observed last summer and little minnows that are going through it that weren't there before. So it's a really interesting ecological asset in the context of infrastructure serves nature, serves human beings. So there you see it working on that second five hundred year flood event, right? That's what the weir does beautifully. It's like the most beautiful.
Serving the purpose.
Right, it's serving the purpose. And the nice thing is that it's also a way that people can actually get into the park from the trails to the south, right? The notion is that you can go through the south, come in underneath the overpass and come into the park in such a way that it's beautifully framed. There's the picture of what it will be, there's the remediation taking place, and the goal is to have in the end what Westfield used to be known for, which is a place that people can get and touch the water. And so this notion is, we're aspirational of having dealt with the infrastructure, which is no small task, to get to a point where it becomes socially purposeful now because it's stable. So the park itself is an extraordinary asset that will actually identify Westfield not just within its immediate place in the cosmos of Hamilton County, Marion County, but actually statewide, regionally, nationally, and I think internationally, in the context of this will be an extraordinary space where people will want to come, not only because of the history of the people here, but because of the place that represents them. So in the context of the park, we have a pavilion, which is, which actually supports a small business. It has a fountain that cascades over its top. We have a plaza, which actually works independent, but actually can marry to Jersey Street. The idea is that you can close this area off and have festivals that spill out into the plaza. We can have large events, small events, et cetera. You have the opportunity for a performance venue that actually is designed to serve the scale of an orchestra, but can actually show intimate plays, dances, quartets, a whole range of performance, whether it's the glee club from the high school to some national touring events. Because it's supported also by a green room that allows for players to prep in advance of coming. It has a raitama that focuses everybody towards that point. Here at the plaza, in addition to the café, we have a skating loop. I designed the second skating loop in the country, it's down in Washington DC. This would be the fourth skating loop in the country. So it's very unique in that people can actually go, I was raised, I spent some time in Canada, so I skated on the Ozil canals and it's part of my childhood. And so this is one of those experiences that I think is great. There will be an area where people can purewet also on their skates. But it's also a space that is flexible because the ring is built into the ground. So all you do is when it gets cool enough, you turn it on and you set up the boards and you have skating. Until it's time to take it down in the spring. And many other things can take place there throughout the year, which we'll go over in a second. Here's Mill Street, which access the sort of levee, and there's the weir that we were just talking about. Here is the modified creek with all of the jayhooks that stabilized that environment. We have a wetland amphitheater for more intimate gatherings. This is a place where you can see your sons and daughters have their weddings or have a gathering of intimate, an intimate gathering if you want to. Could be a quartet play out on the waterpark here. But that's a really nice little space in conjunction with the Trailhead Pavilion, which actually is a point of connection for five trails that come and become the Grand Junction of Grand Junction Park and Plaza. We have an area for child play, very forward-thinking, non-traditional play area for all ages. So it will be zoned for two to five and then six to teenage in that context. And then prospectively, the more quiet and intimate space, the Confluence Terrace, which is actually where there's a union of three creeks at. So in the context of the plaza itself, when it's not acting as a skating loop in winter time, it could be food trucks during the summer, an outdoor market on a weekly basis. The mayor could have his ball here. It could be something for Derby Day. But it's this place where everybody can and should gather in the context of downtown. So then in the wintertime, it's a great celebratory skating loop where folks can come out for activities. It's supported by the café, this is a great winter shop with a performing venue behind. And with Bruce Mau Design, we've developed a language of identity and wayfinding. So there's a branding component to it, where people can find their way not only within Grand Junction Plaza, but actually out into the adjacent neighborhoods. And that is part of that identifier. And it goes right down to the way in which we will brand for this type of thing. So when you come for market, you'll be carrying a bag that has one of our tapestry apples or pear or wood delay. Each of the events will have banners associated with cycles, et cetera. But it's a language that we can all use that will identify this place regionally to people. And that language will be how people begin to identify where they need to go and in the context of the Trailhead, which is that unifying element where the park ranger will be to greet everybody and tell them, you know, go to the rail for lunch and, you know, go to the pizza place, go to, to any of the establishments that are part of downtown. To the performance aspect of it, where people will be gathering for concerts throughout the seasons or performances as they gather there. And one of the things that's really unique, I hope that you will recall, that the pavilions were actually, this notion became a huge block of limestone because we're on the northern reaches of that, pulling it apart into pieces that can actually be fit back together again if a giant were to say to pick up the pavilions and do that. They actually unify back into one solid block. But what's really cool about the performance component is actually the bathroom associated with that makes it an acoustical amenity. We actually took the standards that the Indianapolis Symphony Orchestra needed to say, we could come to this venue, and we designed towards that. And we shared it with them prior to construction documentation. And they said, you met everyone in my criteria and more. So there is no doubt that we could sell this to them as a venue. So the notion is that there's this extraordinary asset that not only is this great identifier for the city of Westfield, it's actually something that will go well beyond you. It is a legacy project that is for your grand nieces and grand nephews. The decision to do this will actually impact generations to come where we will all live in on as people who have occupied that space, been part of that energy, that light that gets together, that communicates with one another for the purpose of conversation, so that we can all invent great ideas in the context of this particular space. So we've completed Mill Street, the riparian corridor is done. We're aspirational that the construction will take place, which is a two-year process, so that someday in the not-too-distant future, we have an extraordinary performance that happens within this park. So thank you for your time. I'm happy, believe in gravity, it's always been a real thing. Happy to answer any questions if that's appropriate.
Yep, right ahead.
Okay. If folks have it, and if not, I'm happy to sit down. Yes?
No parking, I think.
No parking associated with the park itself, we're not designing the parking. The asset of parking will actually come as a result of demand, right? So that's, one of the things that's really important to understand about this particular project, I think, is to think about it as the expenditure of public dollars for a return on investment that is an extraordinary downtown that reaps private engagement in the context of garage, shops, things that you need to live, work, and play in the context of Westfield. But it is absolutely a return on investment notion. And the thing that I want you to remember, as I cited with regard to Park Street, is that you're already seeing the return on investment, so nothing's happened yet except for the infrastructure. Park Street would not, that's a speculation, as is the new brewery, which I just had coffee at, so if there's anybody here that happens to be public. But the notion is that there is significant more to come. We've got to be done with the skin on this, that people are saying, we want to be a part of this. Very important, okay. Questions, Cal? Oh, yes, sorry.
You did, you worked on a drawing.
Any questions?
I have a few.
Yes.
Design-wise, for things like, for the symphony orchestra.
Yes.
They're going to need to bring in big equipment for that. How does that happen?
Right. So we speculate, and we have mapped this out, that they will actually want to have, they'll come in with a couple of trailers. This is a curb cut here that they can offload instruments, pianos, drums, things like that. This has been designed, actually, that a truck can easily back in, offload, and remote park in conjunction with that. And that the green room will also serve the orchestra of players in advance of any performance. So we scaled that to accommodate that space.
I'm not accustomed to the remote parking on that, on those big equipment pieces. It seems a lot to me that.
It happens in most cities, is the idea is to actually remove them from the immediate venue site. But we've actually designed Mill Street with the city to accommodate trucks if necessary.
The original plan had the four different corners. We've changed one due to value engineering. How does that impact the overall feel that you had for this when you designed it?
Right, so what you're speaking about is the notion that this was a pavilion that would have been a restaurant associated with the site. That was deemed a challenge because it also would require a leasing opportunity that we weren't sure was going to work per se. We weren't designing specifically for somebody at that time. It ended up becoming a child play area as a part of a request by the public. What we're actually thinking about is in the context of, prior to construction, that actually the child play area might actually grow to occupy that zone, where this terrace might actually become that place of rest in the context of the place of quiet. And I'm part of the plaza, where a place we drink your coffee, read your newspaper, enjoy the confluence there. It still is very much a part of the original dialogue between four shapes that marry together. This one is just not three-dimensional.
Anything else?
Before we get to the financials, just a comment, because if I don't make a comment when I think of it, it may go away. I think the history behind the development of this is an important piece that we need to have somewhere inside of that. So as people from outside the area and even in the area come, they understand why this is what it is. I think it's important to understand the Quaker history and all of that, how it intertwines. It's nice for us to know that tonight, but you know, over twenty or thirty years, that gets lost. And so to have some way to do that.
To kind of tell the Westfield story in the plaza, and I think that's part of the signage and wayfinding that, yeah, part of the history, as I said, is very important.
I was told to keep it to twenty minutes, so I apologize. There's a lot of narrative that goes in with this. The pedagogy, the history, is part of the signage component that Bruce Mau has helped us with. So narrative will be a part of your experience within the site. So you'll come upon information, whether it's written in stone, written on signage, et cetera, that's discreet, but supporting of the reason why this is here and why Westfield is the city that it is.
You mentioned the confluence of the waterways coming into the park. I also think it's valid to point out the confluence of the trail systems we've developed and the type of families that live here, that want to bike here, hike here, walk here. And it's also a confluence for pedestrian traffic as well as bicycle traffic. And it will be usable in that way and draw people into the city. So as far as parking, there might be less of it than, that's certainly a consideration as we move into the future, but that's not the only people that are going to be using this.
Absolutely. So the trail system that we're, Asa Bales comes in from the north, there's the Monon. There's multiple trails that are coming into this where people will be walking, running, cycling. We have ample bike racks throughout the park while we encourage, that, we acknowledge that some people will drive. We're hopeful that people will be helpful and consider walking or running or cycling. But as, you know, it's in regards to this notion of return on investment for public dollars, we've seen it start, right, before this is even here. One of the assets that will happen, I think, is, well, the land associated that is immediately proximate to a well-designed space increases in use exponentially, right? In the context of development and desire, more than anything. So you're going to see opportunities for the insertion of additional infrastructure that will support those that want to come by car. But also, you'll see additional businesses start to flourish in and around this perimeter. It truly will be a central park, in the same way that Olmsted's Central Park in New York City was a land speculation, that was a real estate grab. It was the notion that this thing could be created that had a great perimeter that would allow for construct all the way around its edge when people didn't want to go to the two rivers that make up Manhattan. Now it's different. But that's actually the same concept that this is. A telltale way of using well-designed public spaces to inform how people engage with each other.
Thank you.
Yes? Question. The area of respite that you mentioned.
Yes.
It's very close to the child area. Will the two be able to exist together so people can actually relax?
Rest? Yeah, so this is actually, I lost Jeremy, he was here a minute ago? Oh, there he is. So we were speaking today, actually, about this. And the notion is, while this, in the present design was for two to five, we had concern about proximity to road, proximity to water. The idea being that we could actually use, reduce this space surrounded by meadow and grow this space so that you have kids of varying age groups play in the context of progressive play, not just swings and jungle gyms, but really dynamic play, learning play, that kind of thing. But it also then affords us the opportunity to make this a little bit more isolated in the context of how people would want to read their paper, with or without children, right?
I have four, so there's no getting away.
You do want to get away, I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chuck, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that when we don't have a lot of questions up here right tonight, we will, I mean, I have some comments, questions, concerns. I just don't want the public to think that we're not having deep input because we've watched this go through various stages. So we're deeply involved and we'll make further comments.
Yep. Yes.
We wanted to just comment on the restaurant. Yeah, removing the, having spent 15 years in commercial real estate, having restaurants, very, 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 so, removal of that long-term is probably...
Probably a good idea?
Yes.
Yeah. What it does do is offer more opportunities for Park Street, more opportunities for Main Street or Union. It's all, I think, good.
Hey, we did hear a question.
Oh, it was actually a comment. The gentleman has a history in the restaurant business, he said, and removing the restaurant, because they're so challenging to maintain and run, is a good thing, to remove it from the park, that it's actually, if you're going to remove something, that was the right thing to remove.
It requires a significant amount of time to allow to just run away or whoever is leasing it.
Thank you all very much. I have to say, I was so joyfully received by so many who I've met over the years, and I just want to say thank you for the warm welcome once again. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Thank you, David. Your passion is, you kind of lack passion. I don't understand.
It's a lack of enthusiasm.
I get it. Okay, thanks. Okay, next up, we're going to talk about money. We're going to talk about, how much is this going to cost? How are we going to pay for it? You see that we have, we have eliminated at least one piece in here, and we did that because of the budget originally came back, and it was about $42 million. The budget we're looking at now, John, is 39?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, all right, even better yet. And, John will describe here in more detail how we're going to do that. This administration had to reach the point where we feel 100% comfortable with this number, or we wouldn't be here discussing it tonight. So, John, and I know Greg Garitas, one of our consultants here that keeps us in line with our sustainability plan, is here. Greg, so...
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. For the record, my name is John Rogers. I'm the Director of Enterprise Development. I'm here tonight to discuss the funding plan for the Grand Junction Plaza. Why? To create a place where people connect, a unique downtown, a sense of place, an economic tool, an environment where developers will invest. Grand Park is central, or Grand Junction, I'm sorry, is central to the current downtown strategy. We've kind of illustrated that here. It will be a destination. This is a $35 million project. It's expected to take two to two and a half years. The project will be funded the same way the highly successful Grand Park project was funded. Additionally, we will still have the smallest debt per capita between the four largest cities in Hamilton County after adding the funding for the plaza. This is a breakdown of the estimated engineering, the engineer's estimate on the cost. This will be available after the meeting on the web for information. During construction, we'll have these additional parking spaces, the 60 existing spaces, as you can see, that are now where the Grand Junction construction will take place. We'll add 277 parking spaces in those areas to offset the loss of that parking during the construction process. If you have any questions, I'll take those.
I guess Andy's back up? Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Of course, there is, there's a lot to this whole process. Later this evening, one of the ordinances will ask the council to begin the process. This is not a one vote, one item piece. This will go through a process of Jim Crawford, I think, that's some Jim walking in there. Yes, Jim Crawford, and our new advisor will describe the process that can go through, which is very, very similar to what we did with Grand Park. As we go through this, there'll be a lot of questions. Expect that, welcome that. We will be able to show you why Grand Park, how they turn, while you're in session. This will prove to be a legacy item for the city. And we're working very well with our project of Grand Park. Many of our 1 billion-plus visits to Grand Park will have all of these chain restaurants, if they want, out there. And the entertainment out there, and the skies, and the family everything, and the miniature offers, they're all brilliant. We also want to offer not only a special place for our citizens, but a special place for our visitors, who want to see, touch, feel, and taste what local Westfield truly is. Learn about its history, to see what a welcoming society that we have here in Westfield. Now, the easiest thing for us to do would be to put a Peter Potter in a jungle if you're not there. Not very easy. It costs a lot of money. It wouldn't be much in the light of our creative gathering. I also think it's very important, we talk about that return on investment, even based on the anticipation of this project, we have so many entities that are invested in downtown Westfield, and literally are making the culinary scene of Indianapolis notice the impact that Westfield is now having. The Field Brewery, you've got the Chivas and the Greets, the Vail, you've got the new ice cream bakery shop coming in, the new 31, Prop 31, new flower dip shop, I believe, that's coming down there. We've got the Grand Junction Brewing Company. John, you just found out something very special is this evening, did you not? Would you tell us?
Yeah, so, Grand Junction Brewing Company received an award tonight in Bend, Oregon, Best of Craft Beer awards were announced, and it's going to bring in some hard work back home to Westfield.
Why haven't John and John kept me here? As I know these restaurants do. One of the main reasons, we also see, we see housing again through the block, housing to be legal. We want to, we want to create our downtown, all due respect, we don't want it to be like many other downtowns we've developed. We want to keep it developing along the lines of what Park Street looks like, and what it's becoming. Yeah, we'll have some new buildings, but we reuse so much of our old, and we remade so much of our old. And, you know, people really like that. Carmel's, Carmel, and it's wonderful. Fisher's, Noblesville, and it's housework. All we're doing is something a little bit different, capitalizing on an asset that we have, that will be very, very... If we decide to greatly compromise or not make this special, and I told you that we went through that exercise, we'll later develop downtown. If we don't create that downtown, we're, we have residents and almost all our visitors will make our new downtown out of Grand Park living. And I don't think that's what other citizens want in the long run, state of the day. So, be with us over the next month or two as we go through this, ask your questions. If you're also unsure, we'll discuss it in person, right? And, thank you for allowing us to...
Just a couple of things. It was a long haul for a lot of people at the Downtown Westfield Association, kind of part of it morphed into the Grand Junction Task Force. Anybody who was on those committees, I've seen some faces out there that I think were on those. Could you stand up so we can thank you for the, for the years of work and the fact that you're getting, it's not et culmination yet, but at least it's getting along the way. So, all those who've served on the Grand Junction Task Force, would you just please stand up so we can thank you for all of your efforts? And since I did see, I was watching Channel 13 News earlier tonight before coming up here, and did see the Grand Junction talked about on TV, there could be a lot of residents that you run into who say, "What is that all about?" Refer them to the website tomorrow to see the 20-minute presentation that David has. I think that explains an awful lot about what the Grand Junction is all about. So, with that, with that, we will move on to the next item. Tammy, you have a presentation?
Council President, members of the council. For the record, my name is Tammy Harvard, and I'm the Financial Strategist for the City of Westfield in the Enterprise Development Department. As you're aware, the Enterprise Development Department, John Rogers and myself, have been making efforts to put policies in place to ensure the legislative body is better informed of the finances of the city. As part of this initiative, we currently report to you quarterly the debt and investments of the city. For this presentation, I'm going to give you some quick highlights on 2018. On the debt side, we paid off two general obligation bonds, the 2005 bond and the 2015 geo-bond. We did add one geo-bond to the 2018 geo-bond in December. The geo-bonds are part of our tax rate management strategy and are used to purchase vehicles and equipment for public safety and public works. We also converted the 2013 bond anticipation note to permanent financing in 2018 as well. On the interest side, you can look up on the screen, and you can see that we've had success negotiating with our banks to increase the interest rates significantly from 2017 to 2018. The Director of Enterprise Development, John Rogers, who you just heard about, has watched the Fed closely and made sure that the interest rates were increasing accordingly. The proactive approach has led the city to increase the interest revenue by $200,000 from 2018 to 20, from 2017 to 2018. You can see that in 2017, we only received $132,000, and in 2018, we received $334,000 for roughly the same amount of money. That's a 2.5% increase in interest revenue. Looking for ways to increase the revenue and to get what is owed to us is another way that we can help the city to be successful financially. And if you have any questions on the debt or investment reports, you can reach out to myself or John.
Any questions now? Cindy?
I had a comment today from a member of the public.
Sure.
And this is probably a pretty basic thing for us, but maybe, and maybe Cindy might be the one to answer, because with our investments, we have a chief officer there, which is you, Cindy, that does that, right? But, Enterprise has a part in that, but you're the actual decider? That's how it works?
John and I work with banks, and if it's a, if it's a good investment, um, we, I'm sorry, I'm in for it as long as it's within the guidelines of the state. And then Enterprise Department is, Tammy and John are tasked with doing the reports for the council, the mayor, and myself.
That's the back office stuff we don't always see, so, thank you for explaining.
Yes.
Anything else? Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Onto old business. Ordinance 1851 of Chatham Hills PUD Amendment 5.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, for your adoption consideration, have an amendment to incorporate an additional 68 acres into the Chatham Hills PUD District. This property is generally located at the northeast corner of 199th Street and Horton Road, and would be incorporated into District 1, Residential District of the PUD. The amendment also includes standards to facilitate the annexation of one of the parcels within the area. This item does come to you with a favorable recommendation from the January 22 Plan Commission meeting. Petitioners here, they do not plan to present, but they and I are both available for questions. Thank you.
Do I have a motion on ordinance 1851?
So moved.
Joe Edwards moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jimmy. Any discussion or questions?
I have one kind of legal question, probably for Brian or Matt. In the commitments, the last sentence, "The commitment shall terminate as to any part or parts of the real estate for which the zoning district or classification is later changed after the effective date." To me, that made it sound like this commitment is no longer in effect if they brought a new PUD amendment. Is that a possibility?
That's correct. That's correct. The idea is that if they do change the zoning, then some of the commitments that are included there wouldn't be relevant any longer, and they'd be revisited as far as the commitments they would tender to the town in that rezone petition.
So, 10 years from now, and say this wouldn't develop, we've had that happen, right? And they come back and want a PUD amendment, these commitments that we see now would not be enforced with a new project?
Yes. The idea being, new commitments would be necessary. This is project-specific.
Would that show up anywhere in a staff report? Do we need to have those commitments?
No. I'm not sure. This was a, this is a separate thing from the PUD. It's a, it's a commitment.
The amendment will be recorded.
Okay.
Roll call vote?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
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 Next item is ordinance 1852, the Spring Mill Trails, Spring Mill Trails PUD amendment, which is actually the Griss Mill Crossing Residential District. Pam?
Thank you again, Mr. President, members of the council. Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, again, for your consideration, I have a proposed amendment to the Spring Mill Trails PUD District to be known as the Griss Mill Crossing Residential. This 58-acre site is located at the southwest corner of Ditch Road and Casey Road, and is currently zoned at the mixed-use district of the Spring Mill Trails PUD. The proposed amendment permits a total of 177 units in two sub-areas, as well as including standards for the development of the district. This item, again, comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission's February 4 meeting. I do have the petitioners here. They do not plan to present, but are available for questions, as am I, if you have any of the department. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on this ordinance?
So moved.
Motion made by Jimmy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck.
All second.
Discussion. Questions?
Is this a part of the developers' requ, or our request to see that this amendments, or the amendments to the plan get taken care of as far as, well, swimming pools, you know, recreation areas, that sort of thing? Was this a part of that, is this a part of that deal?
We have, we have, neither member of the Plan Commission's here tonight from the council, so you'll have to answer any of those questions for us.
They did include a set of commitments as well that are not, that are, will be signed and enforced once the PUD is, if the PUD is approved, the commitments would go along with it. And they are committing to building the amenity center, and there's...
And you feel that that's satisfactory?
The Plan Commission did.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
I have a minor one. In the permitting of the total number, does that, does that represent the exact number of lots? I know there was some discussion, and some minor things changed.
Yes, that is the number of lots that was shown on the primary plat. The primary plat was approved contingent upon your approval of the zoning.
Ms. Howard, was the total number of lots reduced...
Ms. Howard, was the total number of lots reduced from the original?
Yes, I believe it was originally 180.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Next item, ordinance 1854, the Monon Crossing PUD.
Meeting of Council, Mayor Jonathan Dorsey of VCD. Before you tonight, for adoption consideration, is the Monon Crossing Plan Unit Development for the property located at 827 State Road 32 and Spruce Lane. This property is located just west of what will be the Monon Trails Bridge over 32 on the south side. Currently, this is approximately 3.4 acres in size. The proposed PUD will change the AGSF-1 and the Trails PUD zoning on-site to an enhanced GD, General Business zoning. Since last coming before you, for introduction, the petitioner has added a pedestrian park on the east side of the property, along with several graphics to demonstrate the screening of rooftop mechanicals from the Monon Trails Bridge at varying heights. The Plan Unit Development is coming before you tonight with a favorable recommendation by the Advisory Plan Commission. Representative is here tonight to answer any questions, but is not planning on making any presentation. Staff is available for questions as well.
Do I have a motion on ordinance 1854?
So moved.
By Joe Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cindy Spoljerich. Questions?
Yes, since the petitioner is here, could he come forward? Could that, oh, Jesse.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, Jesse Pullman with On Point Land Matters, and I do have here with me this evening representatives from Midland Atlantic Properties as well.
Okay. There was some discussion about the concept A and the concept B, which we're taking a look at. There's some discussion about keeping them a little bit offset, the buildings, and I'd just like you to discuss that. Since Steve Hoover and Bob Horkey are absent tonight, which they were more subject to discussions at APC.
Yeah, early on, before we had filed the plans, we had some pre-meetings, staff, several of you to kind of get engaged, some input and thoughts on the preliminary design. And at that time, it had shown where one of the buildings was set further back than what you see in both of these concept plans. And as we're going through the process, there was a lot of encouragement to try to stay within the requirements of the State Road 32 overlay, which has uniquely a maximum setback, unlike several of the other zoning districts, which meant that if we were to comply with that, we needed to pull those buildings back up to the north closer to State Road 32. The design intent and the feedback we heard was primarily to try to minimize the amount of parking that was in front of the building. So, and as a result, what you end up with essentially is a single drive aisle with parking on both sides. So, as a result of that change, as well as several others over the last couple of months, as we worked through the hammering at this design, it's resulted in those buildings following more of a uniform alignment. With that being said, the buildings aren't firmly set yet, we're just operating within this box of setbacks. And so, although it may be possible that there are still some variations in those two buildings, that won't be known until we get into the end-user scenario where we hack the final building design at that point.
I just, from my point of view, I would encourage you to look at anything you can do so it looks offset or somewhat, the architecture is interesting or landscaping. I think you can accomplish some of those things. Those are my only comments. Council?
I have one thing to say. We met very early in the process, Jesse, and I had requested a little bit better architecture, I think, than some of your original images. Some of them are still occurring in your exhibits, but for specific reasons. I would really add that I think you need to stay away from corporate franchise architecture, because I think that's what we're really trying to get away from in terms of what we want on State Road 32.
Appreciate that comment.
Other questions? Comments? Clerk, call the roll.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Next item, we have a resolution, 19-100. We have to do, prior to an annexation, we need to do the fiscal plan. So, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 19-100?
Second.
By Cindy Spoljerich, second by Joe Edwards. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, if the clerk will call the roll.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spoljerich?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Now, on to ordinance 19-101, the Lindley Run Annexation, the voluntary annexation into the city. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Moves, Joe Edwards seconds. Comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Cindy Spoljerich?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Our next item of old business is the ordinance 19-03, the Junction PUD Amendment, which is the Riverview Hospital helipad. We had an extensive presentation last month.
Yes, we did.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 19-3?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
We're running low. Now you can comment if you want before we ask you questions. You aren't going to get questions if you-
You've made him speechless. Mr. President, you've made him speechless.
Yeah, real quickly, there's really been no modifications to this project since it was last before you. We've simply incorporated the presentation slides that you saw into the ordinance for reference, so it comes to you with the unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission.
Does this conform to the flight plan that he presented, the flight requirements, I should say?
It does.
Okay.
For those members of the audience who weren't around here for the presentation, Riverview Hospital in Noblesville has a helipad like this, and they average approximately one flight a month. So, this is not a, this is not going to create heavy traffic above our skies just by approving this. And it's mainly an outbound flight that they would anticipate if it occurs. So, it's a low use, but if it's any of us who need to get someplace quickly, it's probably a nice thing to have. So, any other comments or questions? If not, please call the roll.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Cindy Spoljerich?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
That ends old business. So, we are now into new business. So, we have ordinance 19-04, the Oak Manor North PUD Amendment. This is a council introduction.
Evening, Council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you is a proposed amendment to the Oak Manor North PUD specific to a parcel approximately one acre in size located north of State Road 32, just east of the Grassy Branch Marketplace. As you may be aware, many of the standards in the existing Oak Manor North PUD, including development, landscaping, and signage, were frozen at the time of the ordinance filing and adoption in 2005. Tire Discounters, a tire sales and repair business, which is to locate on the real estate, and in order to provide connectivity between their parking lot and the auto zone that exists to the east, the petitioner is proposing to modify the trail corridor immediately adjacent to State Road 32 from 30 to 20 feet. Because an amendment is necessary to accommodate the aforementioned request, it was suggested by planning staff that the petitioner repeal and replace the existing zoning, so it now defaults to the UDO. Because this amendment now proposes to default to the UDO, the petitioner is requesting relief from certain standards. This item will receive a public hearing at the March 4th Plan Commission Meeting. John Timmerding, on behalf of Tire Discounters, is present this evening. He does not plan to make a presentation, but is available for questions, and I'm available for questions of staff. Thank you.
Any questions from Council? Seeing no questions, we'll move this on to APC. Next item, Resolution 19-101, reestablishing a cumulative capital development fund. Again, this is an introduction.
Council President, Members of Council. For the record, my name is Tammy Harvard. Tonight is the introduction for Resolution 19-101, a resolution to reestablish the cumulative capital development fund, also known as the CCD Fund. The public hearing and adoption consideration will be on March 11th. The reestablishment of the rate is an annual process that allows Council to set the rate as a maximum of five cents per $100 of assessed value for taxes payable in 2020. The Council does not adopt the rate tonight, you're merely setting the maximum. Our CCD rate for 2019 is currently five cents, and the CCD rate is included in our current city rate, which is currently the 10th lowest in the state. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions from Council members? So, we do have this already in our budget, the same rate that's being proposed in this new, and this just sets the maximum ceiling.
For the 2020 taxes.
Next budget cycle.
Yes, sir.
We'll see you again in the next month. Okay, ordinance 19-05, City of Westfield authorizing the issuance of bonds. It's an introduction tonight. So, I'm not sure who's making this introduction.
Jim Crawford.
All right. We will do this legally.
I ain't going to do that. For the record, my name is Jim Crawford, a partner with law firm McCrory Devault. We're serving as bond counsel for these bonds. This ordinance is a companion ordinance with 1906, which is the Additional Appropriation Ordinance, which is also necessary before the bonds can be, proceeds can be spent. We originally were thinking that after the introduction of these ordinances tonight, we would have the public hearing at the February 25th meeting, but due to scheduling, we would like to schedule that for the first meeting in March. So, notice will go in the newspaper for that. The bond ordinance authorizes a maximum of $39 million worth of bonds, authorizes short-term borrowing in advance of that in a term not to exceed five years, which is the statutory maximum. The financial advisors have solicited bids for the bond anticipation note, and they're currently evaluating those. It'll be a negotiated transaction, which provides more flexibility in fine-tuning the financing terms to the needs of the project. We anticipate that that interest rate on the five-year note will be 2.65% or in that neighborhood. The note and the bonds would be payable from lit, the note capitalized interest, so when the bonds are issued, then at the end of the term of the bands, those bonds would pay off the bands. The bands can be optionally redeemed at face value, no penalty three years after their issuance. The bonds will be a maximum of 25 years and would be issued at the time the bands are being paid off. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Crawford, the, we have secured some prior debt by lit, local income tax. Do you think that this will endanger us any by the additional securing of this with lit?
I'm not your financial advisor, but I will answer it this way. There are two prior issues that have lit pledged to them. One of the requirements of those prior financings is that there be a certain coverage ratio of lit to, when you take those two obligations and you add the new obligation, the coverage of that has to be at least 125, which is industry standard. The projections have been prepared by OWA Crone show a coverage of about 2.56 up to almost six times coverage.
So, we're in pretty good shape on that.
You, the presentation indicated $35 million was needed for the development of Grand Junction, and you're talking about issuing $39 million, and I know when the $35 million, there's capex and there's contingency money, so why the difference?
Again, the financial advisor can get into that, but the, that's just a maximum not to exceed amount. The amount that actually would be issued for the bonds would not exceed what is necessary at that time, which would include paying off the bands, any interest that is accrued but unpaid on the bands at that point, plus probably a year or so capitalized interest on the bonds, and so that would get you to there. Because the bands are, as you know, are interest-only with a bullet payment of the principal at either optional redemption or at maturity.
If we issue-
And we always, in the ordinance, have a little bit of extra room, just with the understanding that only the amount that's needed and is supported, and we have to make the analysis from a federal tax law standpoint, that there isn't an over issuance of the amount that's necessary for the project. So, our opinion is on the line, and so we look at that carefully when bonds are issued.
So, is the procedure here to get the bids in on the project and then issue the bonds that will cover that, or do we issue the bonds first and then, while the bids are going on simultaneously?
The bond anticipation note will be issued to provide funds to begin working on the project. The bonds will not be issued until, in all likelihood, after the project is completed, and I understand that, what, about a two-and-a-half-year timeframe? And the bands, we can't pay those off for at least three years.
Okay. I understand. Other questions?
We have like a trifecta here with Mr. Crawford, Mr. Garretas, Mr. Treat. I think that's Mr. Treat that I see.
Yes, it is.
I didn't know Jim was going to be here. I would have had you step up.
It's like I could ask like thousands of questions, but I'm-
All the questions you want, Cindy.
No, I'm like, I'm getting-
Go ahead.
It was a dark and rainy night, so I came out.
I'm glad you did.
And this is probably not for you, unfortunately, so maybe it'll be Mr. Garretas, maybe it'll be Mr. Treat. What I'm worried about is the bigger picture. You know, we only have so much money. There's only so much money that can be had. And we already, you know, have pledged that we were going to put Grand Park, and both Grand Park, indoor and outdoor, you know, on TIF. And currently, we don't have that ability, so that's still on lit. And then we have this coming up on lit, short-term, TIF long-term. This is all coming out of, what I understand, the Core Four TIF, the whole aggregate of all these things. And that's, you know, I'm starting to get concerned about the picture overall, and when we add in State Road 32 expansion, I ran a different funding source, but we don't know the full outcome of that, other needs as we're growing, and I want to make sure that we're not overextending ourselves. And so, again, Jim, I don't think you're probably the one that's going to handle that.
As a lawyer, I will always point to the certified public accountants, and they're no crunching.
Yeah, I'd love to hear from both of them. This would be great.
John, you want to lead that discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I can have Jim Treat come up and help you with a part of the question, but Cindy, as we've discussed several times in the past, we look at a strategy that's five, seven, and 10 years out. And so, the growth of the city and the growth of the tax assessed value of the city are both in a trend that would put us in a position that will clearly support these costs, this expense that we're taking on. But we work with both Greg and Jim to make sure that the numbers that we're using are very conservative. And again, I can have Jim come up and talk to some aspects of that. But it really is basically those spreadsheets that I prepare, that we look at on a quarterly basis, that track our revenues and our expenses, and any changes, and any new information we have goes into those spreadsheets, and we recalculate. And even with the latest recalculation, we're still in good shape to meet these obligations.
We're in a target about 220, right? 220 million. Two-hundred-and-twenty million to cover Grand Park, and you add this onto that, then how much do we need in the T I F? You know what I mean? In the assessed value?
And again, the assessed value is growing at a rate that is almost twice what we have estimated in the spreadsheet. So we are very conservative on the revenue estimates over the next five, seven, and ten years. And that's when a lot of this change will take place, when these expenses that are currently in the, against lit, will start to move and be, be permanently posted against T I F. And then the, those dollars that are freed up would be then used for operations like supporting the operation of Grand Junction Plaza, is a great example, right? So that transition, as that, that body of work comes online, we start to be in a position, because of the growth and because of the way we've planned everything, again with Greg and Jim's assistance, so that we are in a position at that point in time to make that change.
I still.
Does that help?
From them too, though.
Okay.
I think, I think we're probably paying them to be here, so now I wanna get my money's worth.
All right. Mr. Treat.
Jim Treat, partnered with O W Crone Associates, and been financial advisors to the city for quite some time, probably twenty-plus years. And I mean, I can really just echo what John has said. Cindy, I mean, the, the track of the growth is where, is, is what's key, and I mean, none of us can really say exactly what that's gonna be, but I think the things that he's been focusing on reporting to you are the, the significant A V growth trend of the city. I think all the projects that are coming to bear will have a great impact on this. And what, what we've done, although it does add to the cost, which has been illustrated a couple of times tonight, we've really given you guys as much runway as possible to get this going, but to not have to start making debt service payments for quite some time. So if you look at the actual schedules with the bond anticipation note being five-year financing, that covers the construction period and then another three years of growth. At that time, when the note becomes due, and any interest will be paid out of the, out of the, out of the note proceeds, there won't be any obligations for principal or interest for five years for you to come up with out of lit or anything else. And the sizing on the, the bond of up to thirty-nine million, we don't expect it to be that high, but it may be thirty-seven or thirty-eight, the bulk of that is gonna be capitalized interest, but, and it, the amount's gonna change depending on how the timing and everything is, but there's, there's another, I wanna say eighteen months' worth of capitalized interest there, so we'll have interest only on that bond, long-term bond, for a year and a half. So you really will not be having any bond payments to make out of lit or any other source till two thousand and twenty-five, probably a partial year less, you know, half or less, full debt service, I would say, in two thousand and twenty-six. So it gives you that much runway to build up. That's why John is saying that they're comfortable with their ongoing analysis, that with the growth we've had, you, you're not gonna have a, have to have a really humongous increase in that, or you're gonna, you could have some slowdown periods, excuse me, and still hit those targets using all the increment you've got. I mean, that's about as specific as I can be. I mean, I can tell you, we've worked on the, the Wheeler Landing project, we've had a lot of discussions there, that, now, there are some obligations with that, those obligations are expected to be very short-term, but right there, we're talking probably sixty to sixty-five million dollars in, in assessed value if they're successful in bringing all the projects that they've got planned, and that, that in itself's about a million and four, I think the number, if I recall it correctly, in additional tax increment for that project. So those are the kind of things that we're saying that, that make us comfortable, that, you know, it's realistic that you're gonna be able to do that, and, and at least have increment for a significant part, if not all, of these lit obligations.
But it's banking on the fact that we continue to do well. I mean, if there's a big problem in the market, or something.
There's always a risk of a downturn of, of some, and the, and the timing can be off to where you'll have to subsidize that for some period of time, yes. There's no guarantee, I'm not gonna stand here and say absolutely that's gonna happen, I know what's gonna happen in the next five to seven years. So yes, there's a risk.
I, I think I'd like to follow up. I, I think it's nice that people will come up and meet with, meet with us one-on-one, but I think prior to the public hearing, if we could have a little bit more detailed financial projection, I think it'd be important for everyone to see, I'm projecting a three percent A V growth over the next three years, and yet, I don't know exactly what it is, John, I can't remember, but, and, and trending is, and with all the applications, and it's probably closer to twelve or thirteen percent. Well, all you have to do is have two good years, and you can sustain yourself in a down year, but I think everybody needs to see that, not just us.
Yeah, and that's, thank you, Dr. Keen, that's correct. You know, just something that I've shared with each of you, and as I described earlier, you know, over the last four years, that Core Four has grown by twenty-four, twenty, twenty, almost twenty-five percent a year, year over year. Well, in our projections, we're not even at half that for the projection. So, yeah, damn.
I don't think we need to see that.
Okay.
See that, not just us.
Yeah, exactly.
Because again, people will watch next, in March, and, and I think they need to see exactly how conservative your estimations are, and here's the projections. And they're conservative growth projections, because I, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody who looks around, you can see all the development that's going on. I mean, the A V's coming.
Yeah, it, it most certainly is, yes, and we can do that.
Can I ask one more question? You know, I've heard it's gonna take about a million dollars a year to operate this park, and we haven't really discussed how that's gonna happen, because right now, I mean, we don't have that in a park's budget to fund this additional. And so, I mean, I think that needs to be included in the conversation.
Sure.
Obviously, and how we're gonna do that.
Right. And, and again, as I described earlier, there is a timing issue and, and understanding exactly what those costs are, but what we have right now, what we estimate right now, is we will be able to support a leave a little bit more than that at that point in time when we take over operations, when, when we have a completed plaza. And, and again, I, I'll, I'll put something together for you guys, and, and we can take it from there.
For the city leadership, is March delaying the public hearing to March eleventh a problem at all with where we're headed as far as construction schedules? Other questions?
I still didn't hear from that one sitting right there. I just, I'm gonna head everybody.
Mr. Garretas.
It's all yours.
Thank you and good evening. My name's Greg Garretas, I'm president of Financial Solutions Group, and we serve really as a special consultant on what I call the sustainability. And as you know, Cindy, that, what we've done is we, we put that together each and every year, shows the history, shows where we're going. Right now, we're in the middle of, of final, of putting in the two thousand and eighteen numbers, kind of shoring that up, showing you where we were versus where we were projecting. Everything looks very good at this point in time. Now, do we have some operating costs that will be coming in the future? Yes. Do I suspect, you know, there, like we did many, many years ago, there might be a need for some kind of special legislation if we had a downturn? We're, we're good at writing those, I'm writing one tomorrow morning, and so, you know, there's, there's always roadblocks that you will have. Our goal is, as I've always told you, with the sustainability, is not to hit the brick wall, not to tap the brick wall, but go around it. And so, I like to use that racing analogy, 'cause I kinda do that, and so, you know, that's one of those things that we guide you through, all the revenues and all the expenses, and sure, we'll have to program this in. The good news is that you're a little ways out there. And as you know, with it, with the growth, it's been nine, twelve percent, we have our special legislation that, that has allowed us to be able to get revenues as a result of that growth, where, where I'd say virtually no other city has that right. And so, we're very unique in Westfield, not only in what we're trying to accomplish, but how we're able to get there. And it takes me, it keeps me up at night, sometimes, there's no doubt about it, but I think the, the key is us all working together and getting to the common goal. It won't, it won't be the world's easiest, it won't be the world's hardest, but we've gotta, you know, there'll be revenues that we'll wanna take into account, there'll be expenses we wanna take into account. So that's, you know, we're, we're programming it in, we're working on it, and, you know, but there's, right now, we've got great light at the end of the tunnel. Sure, thank you. Any other?
Mr. President, I have a question. I've viewed you as probably one of the most conservative advisors that we, that we could have. We appreciate that. So my question is, I assume you looked at forty million dollars, you know, looked at the funding that we have proposed?
To a certain degree, Chuck. Remember, you do have a financial advisor specifically on that, and that's Jim Treat, and there were questions over the last six months that I helped in, and the capitalized interest and things like that, which is a very good avenue to give us as, as Jim, and I'd like to even use that, give us the runway as we proceed to be bigger and better, Westfield.
Got it. But I see what, I mean, I, I know that you watch every line item on our behalf, I, I just know you do that, and we're constantly monitoring that. What, what I'm wondering about is, as we cover our debt, as we cover our, our build-out, right, is down the road, where do we cover those operating costs? Where do we cover, you know, if we need some additional parking, or as we look at other things that come along? I just wanted to, I wanna watch you squirm, and I don't wanna see you squirm, you know?
Right.
I don't wanna see you go, hey, guys, you're getting close. That's all. It's just, you know, we have to watch really closely where, where we go, and just, like, personal, just because we can borrow, just because we can spend, I know that you're very sensitive to.
Absolutely.
Reserves, to day-to-day operations, and we do appreciate that and pay attention.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks for everyone who answered questions. That was an introduction, and it'll come back before us on March eleventh, there will be a public hearing, and an additional presentation prior to the public hearing. On to Ardent's nineteen dash zero six. Again, this is an introduction, it's a additional appropriation of the proceeds of the city of Westfield's local income tax revenue and bond anticipation notes of two thousand and nineteen, council of two thousand and nineteen, so.
I don't really wanna say it's perfunctory, but if you pass the bond ordinance, state law requires that an additional appropriation ordinance be passed before the bond proceeds may be spent, and that's why they're companion ordinances, and that order on your agenda.
Okay. So again, in March, this will reappear, and if we do the one, we will do the other.
Correct.
That ends new business. On to any residents who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda, may do so at this time. Do we have any cards, Matt? Oh, okay.
Jim Thurston, here representing my two young sons, who are almost seven and five. As you know, and probably have better details than I, for the second time in less than a year, on, at five twenty-eight, on, on January thirty-first, a thirteen-year-old obtained access to a firearm and used it to assault another adolescent in the community. I ask you to consider, if you have not already, what if this had been at noon and not at five twenty-eight on a school day? Second time in, in less than a year in Hamilton County this has, this has occurred. I commend the city's efforts on, on mental health, bringing that forward and like, but recently, in, in December two thousand and eighteen, the New England General Medicine right here summarized findings of the C D C, where the leading causes of death for children and adolescents. Number one, but has seen a fifty percent decline, fifty percent decline since nineteen ninety-nine, is motor vehicle accidents, and I apologize to you, Mayor Cook, that you know that all too well. The second leading cause, second, trailing only by thirty percent, is firearms. Firearms, sixty-nine percent more than cancer, three times the number of drownings, more than cancer and drowning combined, more than fire, resp, uh, excuse me, fire deaths, respiratory illness, heart, heart, drug overdoses, and general defects, and account for about half of all suicides in this age group. Federal law prohibits an adolescent from actually obtaining a firearm. So how in the world does this happen? An adult along the way has provided them access to a firearm, negligently, in my opinion. So I'm here asking for your help for an ordinance, but I can't do that, because in two thousand and eleven, when you're worried about potholes and trash, the city of Indiana, or the state of Indiana, excuse me, took away your ability to do so, under I C thirty-five forty-seven eleven dot two dash, eleven dot one dash two, including the stor, uh, storage of firearms. The Surgeon General, in communing with, uh, uh, trauma surgeon in the United States on Super Bowl Eve, and the Surgeon General, as you know, hails from the state of Indiana, says, and I quote, "I very much support safe firearm storage." Donna Shabely has mentioned to me that she is, wants to put forth the Gun Violence Restraining Order Act, and I completely support that. What I want, and I ask of you, is your support, combining with Noblesville, who probably have a good ear in this matter, but other members and, of the community and city councils under Indianapolis put forth, floated the idea of banning assault weapons, which I'm not here to talk about on that issue, but we need something to protect our youth in this community from firearms, and I believe that requiring firearms to be safely secured when children are present in a home is something that would be widely, widely accepted in the community. There are a number of other things that I would like to put forth, but I'm running out of time, but I would tell you, even though you cannot vote on this, I believe that you can have an impact, and a great impact, and I'm asking for your support in helping to get that done, and figure out how we can do that to make Westfield a safe destination for all to, to enjoy, but to do so safely. Thank you for precious time.
Thank you, Ms. Thurston. I think, are you participating in our Wellness Coalition?
No.
Well, we'd love to have you, I think that's a topic that.
Let me know what.
Needs to be discussed. Well, Vicki just got your name right there. Thank you very much.
No other comments? On to city council comments, any city council comments? No city council comments, mayor?
Just two quick things, it's been a long evening for us. It is pothole season, we don't get very many, but here's what you do, go to that app that we connect, tell us where it is, and if you turn it in before nine P M., Jeremy will fill it on his way into work. In the morning. May not happen quite that fast, but do, please, let us know where these things come up, and Jeremy's people will get right to it. One day, they're spreading salt, the next day, they're spreading asphalt. It's that time of year. Just one last thing, we just finished up the Indy Suburban Show out at the Grand Park Event Center, huge success. If you didn't get out there, I understand the, the show operator has about twenty percent more vendor booths this year. We were out there Saturday, and the aisles were just packed, it was great to see. So one more use of, brought a lot of people to, to Westfield, so that is all.
Is all? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do Edwards move, second?
Second.
Cindy's, well, your second, voice, vote, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.